Hi Peggy, we're just waiting for another member quick. Hopefully we'll get started in a second.
Can you see me or no?
Hi Deb. Okay.
Let's try that again. Hi Moon, how are you?
Okay, Dylan. Nice to see you.
Glad to see you. How's the knee?
I'm hurting but moving forward, keeping it going. I'm gonna sit up for a minute. I got terrible knee pain, but I'm alright with it. I'll stay available. Who are we waiting for? Son Hee?
I can't hear her.
Logging in, so she'll be here in a second.
Okay.
And Peggy's here, but you just can't see me.
Hi Peggy, how are you?
Hi, I can see all you.
When's the next Furcock meeting? We have one next Thursday, right?
Next Thursday, yep.
And then what's the dates after that? Do you know?
Well, it's the first Thursday in November, so I can't tell you off the top of my head. I don't have my calendar.
The first Thursday, though?
Yep, in November.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Hey Mike.
Hey Moonlight. I don't know why my webcam wasn't working before, but I guess it is now.
Well, we're gonna learn. We're gonna learn no matter what.
It's hard to teach old people how to do something. I tell you, people went to the 99 for dinner the other night and they said they waited for the waitress to bring the menu and they said, "Oh no, we don't have menus. You have to use your smartphone to scan a barcode."
I love it. I love it. Oh God.
It's gonna be that we won't be able to do anything.
That's right.
Are you getting your bicycle on it yet, Moonlight, or?
No, I'm still struggling with the 90% bend and the zero straighten out. That's where my struggle is at the moment. I cannot do the zero bend, I mean the zero straighten out. And I'm just about at the 90, but not totally. And I'm running afraid that if it doesn't bend soon, they're gonna have me do an adjustment and that scares the hell out of me. You know? You know, when you get your knees done and you don't get it done right, it seizes up on you. Then you gotta do something to it and start you all over again.
I know, that's what I did. My shoulder once.
Yeah. Have you ever had that happen, Deb?
No, but my mom's struggling with her knee right now and is actually going to see a surgeon in a week.
She's going to do resurgery?
She's going to see a surgeon about it for the first time. She was supposed to have it done the day before all elective surgeries were canceled.
Oh wow.
So now she only is having it scoped and something else, so it's not a replacement. They're hoping this will buy her some time before a replacement.
That replacement stuff is serious.
Yeah, she'd like to avoid that as long as possible.
I thought I wanted to.
You guys wanna call the meeting to order and start? I can get Son Hee logged in.
Alright, I'd like to wait for her to be truthful.
Wait for? Waiting for Son Hee?
Yeah, she's gonna take the minutes and it's important that she hears what I have to say.
Okay. Who, I thought Deb, oh you don't wanna take the wisdom, well Son Hee is taking it. That's right. That's right.
I did say if Son Hee couldn't make it, I would do it tonight, but yeah, if Son Hee's coming, they are all hers.
Yeah. What do you think, Mike? Can Deb take until Son Hee gets here?
No, not really. I want Son Hee to hear the opening statements I have to say.
Okay, and she's coming on now, I say. Huh?
Yeah, hopefully.
Alright.
Seems like a hard platform to operate.
Well, I, no, she dropped her phone in water, so she has a brand new phone, so nothing is set up. So she couldn't, she didn't have access to the link and she can't log into things, so I'm trying to get her onto her computer. And I think she had to restart it or something. It sounds like it's a bunch of hardware problems. In other words, she's having a typical 2020 day. Yes.
And Mariah, can you add me to the screen, or is this limited to five?
Um, I think I can. Let's see.
Well, you're doing a sharing. Well, I supposed to be there, but...
Alright, you should be able to share your screen now.
It's still dark over here, so she gotta click on it to make it green.
Yeah, there should be a, oh there you go.
Oh damn.
There I am.
Thank you. There was a question Moonlight asked me, and when we're waiting for Son Hee, maybe you could answer it. He asked about enforcement of the bylaws, the planning zoning bylaws. And that would be the building inspector, isn't it? At least that's what it does in our bylaws, so.
Inspector, you're zoning enforcement officer.
So if he found an infraction, he would then have to go get the police or the planning board? Or who would he get to rectify that?
Usually, he either talks to the property owner or the business that has the infraction and if they don't comply, usually follows up with a letter. And then if they don't comply, it's possible for the town to impose fines. But hopefully, the building inspector contacting them or sending them a letter would do the trick.
Okay. So my other question, Peg, is this. In writing the bylaws and doing this kind of stuff, is the job of building inspector, does the building inspector need an assistant to help him cover some of this ground in Irving?
Hey guys, can I butt in just for one second? We have a quorum and this qualifies as discussion, so we really need to call to order.
Yes, yes, I'm agreeing. I'm just here. I apologize.
That's okay. I just, meeting law and all that stuff. I just wanna make sure we're on the up and up.
Hi guys.
Okay, good. Hi Son Hee.
Hi Son Hee.
Hi, how are you guys? I can't access the webinar because I can't download anything on the app right now. Trying to figure out my Apple ID. So that's gonna take a little while.
Okay. Can you take minutes, or are you able to do that?
Can I take minutes? Yes, I can take minutes. Yeah.
Okay.
Call the meeting to order at 7:16. And is there an antitrust statement we're supposed to read? It's a public hearing. Jackie, do you know, Mariah, can you read that? Jackie had a statement she read.
I think we can just say that we're doing this online in accordance with the governor's executive order.
I know sometimes you have to, if we can't see you, you have to state your name before you say something. But if there's any questions, we should be alright, I think.
Okay.
Anyhow, we're gonna skip over the approval of the previous minutes until after Peggy does her presentation because I wanna read through them in detail and it's gonna take quite a long time. Be quite frank, I was pretty overwhelmed with this task, trying to do it during a pandemic. And Monday, I had a conservation meeting at 1 o'clock and I went and saw Brian. And I wanna make it clear that what he told me is the bylaws, the zoning bylaws are the responsibility of the planning board. And we don't have to make any changes if we don't feel we need to. So I was under the assumption we had to go through the whole bylaw by next year. That's not true. We're only gonna go work on what we think we need to work on. And we're gonna prioritize what we work on by rewriting the mission statement, which is in the purpose and introduction. So that's the main thing I wanna accomplish first, and then everything from that we'll work on. Will help us guide us to what we work on for priorities and what we're gonna work on. So I did talk to Brian. As far as the mail goes, he agreed he's gonna scan in any mail and send it to us. It used to get stamped when it was received and they no longer do that. As far as the minutes of the meetings go, they need to be approved, issued within a week of the meeting, a draft, and then approved at the following meeting and given to Betsy and Dick Newtown to be posted on our site. We need procedures in place. We've depended on people who have been on the planning board in the past, Betsy Sakkard and Jackie Boyd who work in the town hall and have taken care of a lot of things that I don't know how to do. I don't know if anybody else really knows the right procedures. There was an A and R in there that we thought was approved. It wasn't approved. It had Son Hee, my signature, and Jackie's on the cover page. But each one of the plans needs to be signed, so I'm not faulting anybody. I'm just saying, we don't have good procedures in place and that's gonna be something I'm gonna work on too. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Peggy and if she can present her overviews of the mill overlay district and the marijuana bylaws, and then we'll go into the minutes in detail.
Mike, are we gonna double back to this because I do have a couple of questions?
After, we can talk about it after Peggy, but we can talk about it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so hopefully you all got a draft of the planned unit development bylaw, yes? Okay, and did folks have a chance to review it, or do you need an overview?
I would appreciate an overview. It was pretty technical. I'm having a hard time reading it on the screen. I don't know if I can get it bigger or not, but...
So basically...
I can see it now, thank you.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay.
So planned unit developments are a mechanism that allows for multiple principal uses and multiple buildings on a single lot that are developed as a single plan. It can, the build out of the planned unit development can occur in phases, but it's intended to be designed as a unified whole. And so it gives flexibility, particularly in like reusing properties such as the IP mill. If you wanted to, if the, you know, some of the buildings are removed and you had space, you could add other new buildings to that site and have multiple different types of uses located there. So that's the intent of it. This section basically spelled out the purpose. And so, you know, once again, A is encourage flexibility in the design of a development through a carefully controlled review process of detailed plans within the planned unit development. It helps to promote the reuse of historic structures and the use of multiple story buildings and a campus-like clustering of buildings to maximize the amount of available open space. The nice thing about, and I'm not gonna read through every last thing, but the nice thing about this is, you know, if you have one access road going in, you also have flexibility in terms of, you don't need to have specific, you don't need to subdivide it into lots with specific frontages or building lot sizes. So particularly for reusing existing properties that already have buildings on it, I think it adds a lot of flexibility. You can have multiple owners of the buildings, but they have to enter into a covenant or legal agreement that they're going to abide by the planned unit development. So some of the questions that I need answered is, some bylaws have a minimum lot area that's required. You'll see on your draft, under dimensional requirements, that I'm proposing 80,000 square feet, which is roughly a little under two acres. That's because it's pretty hard to put in multiple buildings and uses on, you know, something less than that. But you may wanna increase that. Some towns have four acres, for example, but I selected the minimum to give you some flexibility. Typically, the new structures, the height of those is the same as your existing zoning. So it's proposed as 35 feet, but I added that the existing historic mill buildings being reused, they can stay at their height. Clearly, in Montague, they have five-story buildings and they, I think they're more like 50 feet. So that gives the flexibility of reusing those buildings. This is a special permit process, so the planning board gets to review the application and decide whether it wants to approve it, approve it with conditions, or deny it. It has to comply with your other zoning bylaw regulations like parking and loading or signs. And it allows for uses that are in the underlying district by right or by special permit. So for example, if you had commercial office space that was allowed by right, light industrial, it was allowed by special permit. Those, both of those uses would be potentially eligible to locate in this planned unit district, but everything's going through a special permit process. There are certain access requirements. Basically, this helps cut down on curb cuts. So for example, if we were thinking if the French King Commercial District got zoned as a planned unit development rather than having, you know, a lot with the required frontage and acreage and then another lot with the required frontage and acreage and another lot and all had curb cuts, you know, then you've got more traffic intersections and potential. So the other nice thing is that you can consolidate all those into one curb cut, particularly on a busy road like Route 2, and hopefully pick the spot that has the best site distance to reduce accidents. So it also helps with traffic going on and off of Route 2.
Peggy, I have a quick question on that. Could we make that two accesses if we wanted to?
Yes, if you read there, it says the planning board may grant additional access points to improve traffic circulation for public safety or emergency services if deemed necessary. So you do have the flexibility of doing that. But presumably, the guidance would be initially, you know, one curb cut that is allowing traffic in and traffic out. But if that's not working, yes, if the engineers think there's a better and safer traffic circulation pattern, you can certainly entertain that.
Peggy, I just wanted to clarify, I'm sorry, to clarify on that point. When I read this, I read that to be that it is only for public safety or emergency purposes. So would we still be able to grant a second curb cut if needed, like for public access?
For, I'm sorry, for what kind of access?
For regular access, you know, for general traffic.
I think if it was determined that, you know, the traffic volumes were too high just to go in and out of curb cuts, that would imply that that's a public safety issue.
Okay. Could we just remove the language and just say, can grant additional access points if deemed necessary?
You can, but this is sort of guidance to the planning board about why you'd want to relax that standard. So you can remove that, but if there are other things that you're concerned about, we can add them. And the next set of planning board members may not be familiar with planned unit development, so when they're going through, this is to provide some guidance about why you would wanna relax that particular requirement.
Okay.
Is this, this is a mill overlay district, correct? This is what, that's planned unit development? Is that, they mean the same?
The technique is the same, Mike. I didn't call it a mill overlay district because there are some properties that are outside of your mills. And, you know, the mill overlay district, for example, in Ludlow, it's just covering a historic mill site. You have several locations potentially that you're considering, some of which are mill sites and others which are not. So, you know, semantics, we can call it a mill overlay district, but if you end up applying this to the French King Commercial District, I would not consider that a mill overlay district. So a more flexible term is a planned unit development overlay district. It accomplishes the same thing. It gives you that flexibility.
Just, for me, a mill overlay district, I could understand and this is more complicated for someone who's not used to it, you know, the terms. That's all.
Yeah, you know, if the planning board wants to call it a mill overlay district, you can, but if that might be...
We should probably include other things other than mills in it, then. I understand that, okay.
Yeah, so this is the more generic term. It's fairly common with like site plan review. A number of communities have this, so I think a developer who is looking to repurpose the IP mill site would be familiar with this zoning technique.
Okay, thank you.
So Peg, can I ask this question?
Sure.
In doing this, how does the planning board protect the integrity of Irving by this bylaw? I mean, what are we really doing in protection of what we want in Irving?
Well, because it's a special permit process, your special permit criteria apply. So you're only allowing uses that are allowed by right or special permit in that underlying district. So if the town has determined that light industrial is appropriate for a certain location, like in CV, by a special permit, you're not changing that. What you're, so you're not changing the potential for uses. What you're changing is the ability to cite those on a parcel. And so there may be advantages in terms of more flexibility of the layout so you can avoid environmental resources. We already talked about access so that you would have the ability to limit curb cuts, particularly onto busy roads like Route 2 is advantageous. It gives you the flexibility, hopefully, of being able to reuse some of your historic structures. So for those reasons, you haven't lost any control, if that's what you're concerned about. You're still, it's still the same uses that are allowed by right or special permit in the underlying district, but you have more flexibility in the design of that development.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so it's still a special permit process, discretionary. Planning boards can say yes, yes with conditions, or no.
Okay.
Using your special permit criteria. So you're gonna take into account environmental factors and traffic and all of those good things. This bylaw also has design requirements, which, you know, I'm happy to modify, but it's looking for features that presumably fit better into the Irving landscape. So making sure that parking is located to the side or rear, requesting, you know, different types of roof lines or architectural structures so that it's not just, you know, for example, a large square box. And so there are certain design requirements and we can adjust those. If there are other things that the planning board would like to add, you'll see there's also design guidelines to make sure that you're encouraging the use of building materials that are consistent with other structures in Irving like brick or wood. And making sure that the development is, when you enter it, is pedestrian-oriented so that you have pedestrian ways and making sure that the parking is broken up so you don't have just a big, large expanse of asphalt. So there are specific design guidelines which you should look over and see if there are other things you wanna add or if there are things you want to modify.
Is there anything, Peggy, about with, you know, the COVID, having less indoor hallways and making it more outdoor? Have you seen anything?
I haven't seen anything like that and zoning isn't supposed to address building code requirements. So I don't, I haven't seen zoning bylaws that try and address interior space design and I'm not sure that that's appropriate. This is really looking at the structures themselves, the uses that are within them, and making sure that there's good pedestrian and vehicular access to the site and in and around the site. So I don't know if the building code will add anything as a result of COVID.
Peggy, in regards...
That wouldn't be in the zoning bylaws. Normally, that would be in the building codes or something, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I mean, during the special permit process, if you want to say we need more open space for people to get outdoors and, you know, maybe have lunch, you know, you can look at how the site is designed and request that there are more places for pedestrians to be outdoors. But I don't know, I don't, I've never seen zoning that addresses like interior corridors and how they're structured. That's really a building code issue.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking for more exterior entrances. That would be my preference, you know.
Well, presumably, the architect is gonna present, but once again, I don't know, you know, if there are fire or safety reasons for having more exits. Presumably, your fire chief would weigh in and I just don't know about additional entrances for COVID at this point. Deborah, did you have a question? You can try to jump in.
I did. I had a question in regards to the design of the buildings. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding it properly. If, for example, we approved and the town voted in this bylaw and suddenly renovator supply became available, that's one of the parcels we're looking at for this. And we, as you know, say the town took it and we wanted to turn it into like an industrial park. Very often, those buildings are just the metal box-type buildings. So would these guidelines apply in those situations? Or would it be different bylaws?
But their guidelines, so the use of exterior building materials such as ma- masonry stove, wood and brick is preferred, but not required.
Okay.
You do have some flexibility. There was a great light industrial use and it was going to be in a typical metal industrial building and the planning board felt that that fit into the site along with the other uses. The planning board would have the ability to approve that, assuming that use was allowed by right or special permit in the underlying.
Okay.
And Deb, just to add to that, some of the guidelines, um, like, so for the, like, metal buildings, they can sometimes add features that even though it is like a metal factory building or whatever, they can add like, you know, a gable roof to it or like an entryway that's covered, like something that gives it more detail, which I think is what they're trying to say and be, which is like boxy buildings should be softened. So like, I think that that would kind of be where like, if, if the planning board said, we're fine with a metal building, but we want you to add X, Y, and Z details that doesn't just looks like a box.
Which is, which I am totally all for. I just want to make sure we're not being so strict that if it's truly going to be an industrial type area, that's what I would expect to see down there. So I just wanted to make sure we're not being overly, overly restrictive.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but right now it's a big brick building, isn't it, Renovators?
Mostly, mostly brick.
So it, what, I guess my question is, is, are you thinking they're going to tear it down, Deb, or is it just going to be? I, I don't know.
No, I just think, I mean, right now it's privately owned. I'm just thinking down the road. I want to make sure that as we're writing bylaws and looking at them, we're not limiting ourselves so much. That if someone came in and said, you know, if the town, say the town took it for some reason and the town said, oh, we want an industrial park. I don't want a developer who wants to come in and move their business to Irving to say, oh, man, you have to make, I have to build this beautiful expansive building and well, my budget is just a typical corrugated metal box. Um, I, I just want to make sure we're not being super restrictive in what we're, what we're doing.
Oh, it could be a corrugated box as long as it's got some fancy stuff on it, then, right?
A new trend, alright.
I think, I think it can have the flexibility because that's a guideline, yeah. And then the next section deals with phasing requirements. What I mentioned before was, you know, not, not everything often happens at once, but a developer may come in and say, okay, this is my plan, you know, for the IP site. I'd like to redevelop, uh, the large mill building and then I plan to add some light manufacturing in the, in behind there. And this is where the buildings would go and these would be the types of buildings. Maybe they'd be metal, maybe they wouldn't, um, and this is the circulation pattern and, and that, those, that might be a phase two, uh, once the, the mill building, or reverse. Uh, they may come in and say, immediate uses, we need desperately light industrial space for new build, new, uh, businesses or businesses that are expanding to move in and we'll, we'll be rehabbing the, the mill building second. But anyhow, they'll, the overall plan should be presented and then they would let you know how they're planning to phase it. If there are certain infrastructure requirements to support the site, um, you know, presumably those are going in. Um, and, um, if there are changes which may occur, um, as we know from, uh, the experiences past year, uh, things can change very quickly. Um, and so there may be a desire to modify those, uh, development phases in which case they come back in and, and get the agreement of the planning board. Um, and the, the, the next section is just the procedural requirements. And basically it's, um, requiring them to go through the special permit and site plan review process that are in, uh, your, um, zoning bylaws already. And then it asks for some additional information like, um, renderings, which are drawings of the different, uh, building, um, elevations or known as facade elevation. Um, how the, the building site, um, will fit in with adjacent properties, uh, information on the lighting and signage and the pedestrian, um, amenities, a landscaping plan, so you can see, uh, what is proposed. Um, and a description of, of traffic con- conditions and how that's going to work. And, um, description of the different uses and the associated square footage that are going in. So I know it's a pretty detailed bylaw, but it's, it's meant to sort of dovetail with your existing zoning. Um, and add some additional, um, uh, site application, uh, requirements to make sure the planning board has enough information to make a decision about, about the planned unit development. So.
One thing that I was wondering is, um, and it might just be topical for me because I'm learning a lot about it, but because this is so dense in terms of development, would we be able to require that they at least consider green infrastructure in terms of like stormwater conveyance or anything like that? So that if they're going to be tying into the town systems, you know, we prefer to have them treat water on site when possible?
Uh, certainly during their special permit process, um, if you want to specifically add in here, um, as a guideline that you encourage low impact development techniques, we can certainly add that. You want to add that? See, Mariah nodding. How about planning board members?
I would suggest it, yeah. I don't know what you all have to say.
I don't know. I think the town has enough access, uh, to handle most of the industrial uses and it is underutilized now, from what I understand.
Now, Mariah, Mariah's talking about stormwater management. Um, the, this, the sewage uses, if they can connect into the town sewer, then they certainly will be doing that. But this is to manage the stormwater on the site, particularly with increased, uh, storm intensity that we're, uh, experiencing. It's great to use low impact development techniques because it reduces the runoff, helps recharge, reduces pollutants. Um, so it, it's a very useful technique. Uh, some towns actually have a whole section on low impact development. Um, and that might be something you want to add to your list in the future. I know you're feeling a little overwhelmed right now, uh, but we can certainly incorporate, um, uh, encouragement um, to use that technique to manage stormwater. And we can reference, uh, the state has, uh, different, um, they have a best management practices for low impact development techniques that we can reference if the developer for some reason isn't familiar with it, but I think most are by, by now, so.
That may be, Peggy, we could add to our site plan review too, um, you know, it's an idea, it really is.
I think it's something I'd love to see in the bylaw. Um, it's something we do for solar. I mean, they have to mitigate a, a lot of their stormwater runoff. Um, I learned actually a ton about this when I was working on the library building project. Um, a lot of this kind of stuff actually goes towards like points, depending on what the developer, you know, who the developer is for green energy and that kind of stuff. Um, it, it's, can get them some incentives and I think overall, it's just becoming good practice. Um, and it's something, I know personally, it's something I would like to see and I'd like to see it maybe in a way that has some teeth to it by in a bylaw or something like that.
Okay, well, we can certainly add it to the planned unit development and I'll look back at your site plan review and special permit section and maybe, you know, a quick fix is to just add it there, um, until you have a chance to do a more detailed bylaw.
We have a, we have about erosion control in there, so it would sit in pretty well in that part.
Okay. Any other questions, suggestions? Um, you need to get back to me, does two acres sound reasonable as the minimum size? Or did you want to go increase it?
How big is, uh, Miller's? How big is a Miller's, uh, area? That's quite small down there by the paper mill, right? Behind it, how big is, I would not make it any smaller than that.
I think smaller is better because we, I mean, I think realistically, all of the parcels that we're putting on this are larger, or at least all of the contiguous parcels are larger than two acres. Um, I think there's smaller ones like the French King area, but, um, I think that two acres is fine, but, um, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, I wouldn't make it much bigger than that because the paper mill area, it has a lot of land, but most of it's not accessible. It's all landfill and steep cliffs down there.
The usable space in the paper mill area, the IP paper mill is about five acres.
Five acres, okay, so we're, we're fine with two acres, yeah.
Okay.
Great, and I assume you want to allow for higher height for historic buildings? Yes?
Yes, I, I do. I don't know about anybody else. What do we have for higher, what is the, the paper mill? Is that about four stories there, or do we know?
Uh, three or four, yeah.
About forty feet, it might be higher than thirty.
Yeah, I did, uh, rather than having to go out and measure everything, I just said, existing historic mill buildings being reused as part of a, a planned unit development and they have a building height that equals the height of the historic structure. So, that way, whatever it is, it can save.
Alright, do we want to look at the marijuana, um, bylaw?
Yes, please, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions on Peggy, on the overlay?
No. I had, I know I asked about this last week, um, I'm just worried about limiting that particular site. Why wouldn't we include the old Usher Mill into this bylaw?
Um, well, we should talk about the, did you all get to see the map? Good.
I haven't been able to pull it up to look at it yet, you know, I.
Alright, so that was actually the other thing I wanted to talk with you about. Right now, um, the parcels that Mariah gave us, um, the overlay district would be in the C, which is the French King Commercial District. Um, it would cover the IP plant. Um, but there's a section that goes, you know, down along the river that, um, you may want to, uh, remove. I think, uh, probably, I, if you haven't had a chance to review this, um, you probably want to limit, uh, the PUD to the CV and C districts, um, unless there's some compelling reason. So for example, and I'll get to the Usher Mill in, in a minute, but, uh, um, the, the location of where, I think it's the Irving Paper Mill. Um, Mariah, there's a, a parcel that goes way up into rural residential. Is that the Irving Paper Mill?
Yeah, it's across the street from the current mill.
Right, and that honestly doesn't make a lot of sense to me, having the planned unit development district go up into rural residential.
So I was talking to Brian about this today, so the issue with that is that parcel is huge, but the section along Route 2 makes sense to be planned unit development. So are we able to only make part of a parcel, the, under the PUD overlay?
Yes.
Oh.
How do you define, how would you define that, Peggy?
Um, well, the, your zoning map will, the planned unit development will just line up with the CV district. So.
Right, but we're gonna, part of what we're changing is that we're going to make whole parcels zoned, that we don't have half parcels zoned. So realistically, that whole parcel will either be rural development or CV, probably CV, um. So.
To that, yeah, to Mariah, that we're going to do that.
Okay, well, that was one of the ideas.
I, I think many towns have this issue where you've got a large parcel that straddles districts and there's usually provisions for how far into one or the other you can go depending on the use. So if it's a less intensive use, like residential, it can go a certain way into the commercial or industrial. Um, if it's the opposite of industrial and roaching on residential, it may be reduced. So I can give you some language for that. Um, typically you don't see planned unit developments in rural residential areas. I'm, I, you know, we can look at your use table, but I don't think there's a whole lot of business uses that are allowed in rural residential, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
No, I agree with that. My thought was just that because it was going to be, in my head, I figured that the whole parcel would have to be CV. I didn't realize that you could have, like, have them pick either or. I think we have some language around that in our bylaws, but I didn't really understand it, so that's helpful.
Yeah, so located with, in that, um, within that parcel in the CV district, you can have these types of uses. They may at some point decide to subdivide off the other part of the parcel that's in rural residential, for example.
Yep.
But you see, you see that straddling of, of parcels by zoning districts, it's not, not that unusual. Um, the other, the other question was about the Usher Mill. Um, that is in the CV district. So if, you know, if there are uses, um, or, or parcels, um, in addition to where the old historic boiler room is, that the town is seriously thinking about commercial or industrial development. I, I know there was like the phase one, which is basically the park, but you've got that kind of commercial lot. But then there was a phase two, um, but I think that had environmental constraints in terms of floodplain and natural heritage. So that doesn't seem like a parcel that might have a high likelihood for commercial or industrial development. You'd want to think about that because someone will look at planned unit development and think, ah, you know, this is an area that the town has highlighted for commercial.
It's only one acre, so it wouldn't, um, you wouldn't be able to fit really more than one building on it.
The whole phase two along the river to the, if you're facing or, if you're going down Arch Street, it's the new parcel to the left.
Well, so the, to the right, so if you're going down Arch Street to the right, that's two parcels now because we split it apart. So where the old boiler house was, that parcel's only one, um, one acre. And then the rest of it is all under, uh, park conservation restriction. So it can only be parkland, so none of that could ever be developed to the left. I don't know what that's under, um. But I also don't think that that's big enough to be a PUD.
So my only, my only thought with the, with the specific building site is I know that there was talk down the road at some point of, they'd love to see, you know, like, uh, a kayak business if they ever got river access and, and things like that. And I'm just thinking, is there a way that you could have some type of mixed use in a building on that particular site that we just carved out? And so I would just hate to limit ourselves and maybe I'm just way overthinking that site, um.
I think that right now it's CV, so we already have a lot of available, um, uses. I think the, the mixed use idea is interesting, but I think because it would be in the same building, I think it could just be like a mixed business. Like, we probably wouldn't want an industrial building down there because it's so close to the river. Um, so I think that the uses that we currently allow in CV would let us do anything like that.
Okay.
You know, the only thing, just to make it clear, in, at the top of your youth regulation schedule, it basically limits it to one principal structure or dwelling per lot. Obviously, the planned unit development is relaxing that, but it doesn't say you can only have one principal structure or use. So that's implying that you could have different types of uses within that building.
Okay.
Uh, presumably they may have to go through the special permit process depending on what they are, but, um, some, some bylaws specifically say only one principal building or use. And the reason why some bylaws say that is there may be concern, particularly when we're dealing with the cell towers that were quite large, you know, somebody having, um, a, a resident. You know, somebody having, um, a, a residential home, and then maybe a cell tower in a, in a residential area. Uh, Irving's already addressed that with your, with your cell tower overlay district, but um, that's why sometimes you, you limit it to just one use.
Just looking through the tables, it looks like Central Village is one we allow the most uses in, so.
Hopefully, there's, there's the ability to reuse that structure, assuming that the water situation can get figured out. Right?
Or the roof doesn't collapse. I don't know, I think we might be, we might be holding our breath for that.
Okay, alright.
I keep waiting to see the chimney fall down.
Yeah.
Okay, let's not go there either.
Um, do we wanna, is there, do we have other questions about, um, I was specifically looking at the French King, um, Commercial District?
Yep.
That is included in this? Does anyone have questions about this area?
Well, I kinda do, I did, that's where our water supply is, I believe. Do you have that on this map, uh, the groundwater?
Uh, I don't think it's on here.
Well, anyhow, that, that's one of the.
The groundwater protection district is.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Insert, um, let's just see. I think, um, some of it.
Oh, yeah, it's purple.
But, um, the groundwater protection district requirements would apply, like.
Yeah, very, that would restrict the use, I would believe, more than anything else in that area.
Yeah, but.
Which I think the green infrastructure comes into play there too, where even if you're adjacent to that groundwater supply, if we're encouraging green infrastructure where water can then infiltrate back into the ground, rather than runoff and pick up pollutants, I think that would be good.
And once again, depending on what's allowed in the C district, you know, rather than have curb cut after curb cut as lots are developed, the planned unit development would have the potential of designing one site with, you know, maybe one or two curb cuts and then having a well-designed, um, campus-like setting with maybe some protected open space. So, you might get a better result than just typically, you know, carving up each lot to have the required frontage along Route Two.
Could, can you, I, I guess I can't understand the map too well. Where is the, the school and the French King Bridge on there?
The bridge is right here.
Okay.
And then the school is right here.
So, maybe here again, please?
The bridge is up here, and then the French King, um, Hotel would be right here. The Police Department would be right here.
Alright.
And then I think the mascot facility is right here.
And where is the protective water?
It's this purple.
All the purple?
All in here.
Yeah, so it's all, most of, ha, over half of it's on the protect, the ground, well, where our drinking water comes out of, the, uh.
Did we consider?
Now, the solar field, that's not shown on there, but they just took forty acres out of that.
I think that's here somewhere.
I wanted to ask about that, if the, it, it looks like the possibility that some of that runoff could go into that protective water?
Yeah, I saw, yeah, we, we looked at that when we approved the solar project. That, but there is a forty acre solar project in, in there right now. It should be shown, I would think, on a map.
I went and saw it, you know, the other day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it was big, and, and it, I, you know, I guess part of my problem in general is that the planning board needs.
Oh, you cut out.
Like the overlay where the water is, I mean, shouldn't there be some markings to say that this is part of that protective water thing? In that land, like, there shouldn't be a sign or something saying that that's? That's where it is.
I think it goes all the way up to s, the, the drive-through that we put in. I believe it comes over up that far, doesn't it?
Well, when your special permit application came in, they showed the relationship of that site to your groundwater protection overlay district, yes?
Right, yes.
So, you can see exactly where it was on the site. So, if you look at your use table, there aren't, there are no industrial uses allowed in the commercial, the French King Commercial District. There are some commercial uses that, you know, like a retail store could potentially have hazardous materials like fertilizer. Um, and presumably, you would put in conditions to address that. So, that is a potential, but it looks like, I think most of it is special permit, um, in that district. So, the things that are allowed by right are professional offices, and. A care centers. Uh, see what else is allowed by right? Home-based businesses. Uh, farm stands, tunnels. So, um, there really aren't that many things allowed by right in the Commercial District, probably reflecting that concern about the water supply. And once again, the Water Protection Overlay District requirements would, would apply, uses that were going in there.
Yeah, and I, I think I'd just like to reiterate what Peggy said earlier, that oftentimes, the, the planned use development is, is all about density. And so, having denser development in a, a smaller area can often actually be better than having everything spread out, because then you're having like one parking lot for each building, on each parcel, and you're having each curb cut for each parcel. So, having like a couple of these parcels kind of band together and do the, the planned use development might actually be better overall. And you'll still have control in the special permit process of where is that runoff going?
Okay, so I'm gonna adjust the overlay district to match with the CB and the Commercial District, correct? I'm gonna have Ryan adjust this map that we're doing.
Can you say that again?
Uh, we're going to limit the Planned Unit Development Overlay District to coincide with either the French King Commercial District or with the VC District.
Well, there is some talk, I know at our last meeting it came up, about potentially eliminating the French King Commercial District. So, I don't know if we're ready to give a firm answer on how to redo the map yet.
Okay. Well, you'll need the map, you'll need the map to go along with the bylaw for your public hearing.
Okay.
We're gonna want to know where it applies.
I think it's, I think I'm glad that we have this map, and now we can work off of this to do our bylaws, and then go back to the map and readjust things as need. I think that's what you're saying, Deb, is like, if we're, if we end up getting rid of the French King Commercial District, we don't want to line this up with that, because it might change.
Correct, and I hate to have the poor, I, I think you said his name was Ryan, doing our maps for us, um, and us going to him every week saying, well, now we changed this, and now we changed this. So, I think we, as a board, if we can kind of narrow it down a little better, um, I just think that would be a good idea.
Are we gonna add the forty acres?
Sorry, sorry, Moonlight.
Are we gonna add the forty acres in, in the view? Or is that necessary? You know, in this, in the, in the French King Overlay District?
Well, we don't have any other development on here. We don't have buildings or anything, so I think it would be, it doesn't fit on this map in particular.
It was one of the few uses that we would allow in that area, so.
Well, and the parcel that the solar field is on is there. It's just not the actual, like, hey, this is a solar field.
Oh, well, it'd be nice to see on this map, I agree with, or on a map. I, 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 it would be nice to see if we could have that.
Yeah, I don't think the zoning map is gonna be the right one for that, though.
Right. Alright, I think we should move on to the medical marijuana bylaw and revisit this later.
Okay, so does everybody have the ability to look at the, the zoning overlay district? Or do folks need paper maps that I can send to Mariah and she can get them out to you, or?
That sounds great. Can I, a copy of that, Mariah?
Sorry, everyone's talking at once, what was that?
Uh, I, I would like a copy of the map if possible, Mariah, or Peggy.
Right, you have the zoning to print those out, or, or do you need Ryan to do that?
Moonlight, did you want a paper copy?
Yes, please.
Sunhee, Moonlight, did you want one?
Yes, please.
Yeah, yes, please.
Mike, did you want one?
Yes, please.
Deb? No, okay, so four copies.
Mariah, can you do that in, in your office, or does Ryan need to print those out for you?
Um, we don't have large printers, so if, if we're gonna have a.
Eleven by seventeen is fine, do you have eleven by seventeen?
I think, I think I can do that, and if I can't, then I can let you know.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, on to marijuana. So, you asked me to look over your existing bylaws, and there were some new uses that were added. Um, so that's what you can see, um, in the one sheet on potential amendments to your marijuana establishment. So, you have marijuana social consumption establishments. Um, you really don't have medical, um, uh, cafes. Um, and I think it's better to use the term that's in the, the state legislation. Uh, so marijuana social consumption establishments are what are known as marijuana cafes. Um, and I just kept what was, oh, what was in your zoning bylaws, and just renamed it.
I thought we, I thought we didn't allow that, but maybe I was wrong.
Well, this is from your zoning bylaws that were on the website, so I just took those out of the use table. Um, so those types of cafes are allowed by special permit only in Central Village and the French King. The new uses that I added is you didn't have a specific medical marijuana treatment center. These are, um, uh, defined in the state law, and they're a little different than, um, marijuana retail store, the, the treatment centers can not only dispense and take pro their, the, the product. Um, so if you look down below, I've added some definitions. Um, those entities, they can acquire, cultivate, process edible marijuana or marijuana products um, uh, for medical use. And so, the cultivation and processing of medical marijuana is considered to be, um, you know, a manufacturing use, and it's just clarifying that it's not agriculturally exempt from zoning. But anyhow, those treatment centers can be more vertically, vertically integrated, like retail stores, they just sell, and then the recreational retail stores, they just sell product. Uh, whereas you can also, you also have separate uses, which are cultivation or processing. Um, so the medical marijuana treatment centers are a little different, so that's why I added that line. Um, there are also something called marijuana microbusinesses, and those are also ones that can, um, uh, do some, um, product manufacturing. So, they can both do some cultivation and product manufacturing. So, that's a newer, a new use that was added. I think the idea there was to give, um, perhaps smaller local businesses an opportunity, uh, to do, uh, both cultivation and product manufacturing. So, you know, if somebody was interested in making tinctures or ointments, they could both grow it and then produce those products. And then there's specific size limits. Um, another new use that was added after you had adopted your bylaws, uh, was the marijuana delivery only retail. And these are, um, uses where somebody, um, purchases the, is authorized to purchase, um, the, uh, the marijuana products and then deliver them directly to people's homes. You might have someone in your Commercial District that perhaps has several vans. Uh, they have to have safes inside of them, and there's all kinds of security requirements, but somebody might be operating a small, um, delivery-only transport business, and they might serve, um, a couple of retail stores, for example. Um, and then the other change I think is worth making, right now you have cultivation of medical and/or recreational marijuana, and you have it in two lines. One is no greater than ten thousand, and one is greater than ten thousand, but it's special permits straight across. So, I think what happened was, maybe initially, there was more flexibility for the smaller scale cultivation, but if it's, if, if, if the use is the same across all the districts, there's no point in having two rows. You just want to have one row that says, you know, indoor cultivation of medical and/or recreational marijuana, um, and not specified buildings, because, uh, there was no size limit before, and there was no gradation in terms of permitting requirements. You know, one wasn't by right or just by site plan review. So, um, I think that would be, uh, another change that you could make just to clean up your, uh, use table a little bit. So, that's it. So.
Thank you.
You, you all need to fill in the boxes. You can see they're blank for those new uses.
Well, that's great, thank you for that, I. How about outdoor growing? You, that would, what, the change you said would be, take, where would that be addressed if they wanted to large outdoor grows, would that be?
I mean, you can say indoor or outdoor cultivation of medical and/or recreational marijuana, but that's not what you had before. Some communities are concerned about odor and security and how, um, a large-scale operation outdoors would fit into the landscape. But if that's something that the town wants to entertain, then you would want to change that to indoor or outdoor cultivation. But right now, it says cultivation and it specifically says in buildings. So, was there discussion about outdoor cultivation?
Not at that time, it wasn't really going on that much, um.
Still not going on that much, at least in Franklin County.
But I thought they had, uh, Wheatley or something.
Uh, Wheatley, I think has, uh, uh, one that was proposed. I don't know how much outdoor growing is happening, but, um, most communities, at least, um, you may want to require it to be in a greenhouse. If it's not in a greenhouse, then there needs to be security, and typically, that's chain-linked fence or some kind of fencing surrounding the growing area, um, and lighting, and there needs to be, um, cameras. Uh, so, there's also concerns about odor, um, particularly in residential neighborhoods. Some people liken the smell during the growing season, uh, when, I guess, the plants are maturing at a certain time, uh, that it smells like skunk. So, if you, if you want to allow outdoor growing, we can add it, but, um.
Right now, it's not allowed. I know Wendell just went through, they, they tried to stop it over there. I don't know if they'll be able, I don't, you know, for the same reason.
I haven't experienced the smell of, of, uh, the recreational marijuana, but I know there were some hemp, uh, farms along Route 112 out in Buckland, and they were quite, um, fragrant, you might say, at certain points during the. at certain points during the growing season, which not everyone enjoys.
And, and just hemp would be excluded from this, is that correct?
Yeah, hemp, hemp is an agricultural product. It requires a permit from MDR, but it, it can happen by right. Not, not subject to this zoning bylaw. This is just recreational and medical marijuana.
Well, to your point, it sells as that as marijuana, really, so, or medical marijuana.
So anyhow. You all need to think about how to fill in those lines in terms of where it's allowed by special permit.
Right.
Thank you, Peggy.
Yeah, thank you. Is that about everything you want to cover, Peggy?
I think so. I think it's a great time, probably taking up more time than you had, but we got through it all. Woo!
Yes.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, Peggy.
So I will wait to hear from Mike or Mariah about changes and also changes to the map. Yep, once you make the decision. Okay. Very good.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
So can we go through the minutes, Deb? Thank you for doing those. I'd like to go through each one of them and approve them, if we could, the three that you, you provided for us.
Yep, does everybody have them?
Not in front of me. In my opinion, the minutes are the most important thing that come out of a meeting, so.
I don't have the minutes, just because I haven't been able to access my town email. I did stop by and see Brian and he can get in on a town hall. I just, I can't do it off my phone or at home for some reason. And I can't, again, I can't download the app because my phone's not recognizing my Apple ID.
I can, I can work with you until you're able to get your phone all set up. And, and try to work with you on your, the computer that you have. But I think once you're able to get your, your phone set up and download the app, I think it'll be a lot easier.
Oh, definitely, definitely. I agree.
That's what I have, and it's the best, I, I mean, I fought the town on using our personal emails and the policy is we have to use the town emails. So the best thing that I can suggest is what Mariah just said, is try to get it loaded on your smartphones. And it doesn't, you know, it's kind of hard to read the documents, but at least you know when you get an email. I don't know if that's something you would like Moonlight to, but that's, that works very well.
Yeah, no, I-
Excuse me?
I'm all for it.
Okay, so I, I would, that would be something that would help a lot, Mariah, if we could get Moonlight and Sunhee's phones loaded with the town email.
Yeah, I'm happy to help anyone with that if you give me a call during the week, or we can set up a time to go through it. I know, Sunhee, you were saying that you just had an issue with, with your email. So I can, I can help you with that until you're able to get your phone resolved. And we can try logging in on, you know, your, your computer and see if that works. So we can, we can figure that out if you want to set up a time. I know you're probably busy, but set up a time during the week or something.
Sure, that sounds good. Wednesday afternoons are good, because Lily is, she's on a half day on, on Wednesdays. So she gets out like at, you know, like noon. You know, I mean, she's at home doing the Zoom thing, but I still have to be around and help her if she needs whatever, you know what I'm saying? So Wednesdays are her half days and that's probably good. And then my other children, one's up on campus and one's gonna be here. So, but she's like middle school, so she can pretty much, you know, sit around on the computer on her, better than I can probably. But, you know, so I'm not about her, but I'm just more worried about my seven year olds, you know, who need some assistance there and there. But Wednesday would be good at some point, afternoon, like one o'clock or something maybe, or one, two, three, something like that.
Okay, I will reach out to you.
So, Sunhee, do you, Sunhee, can I ask you a question prior to, can you, do you have access to a computer that you can type these minutes up?
Yeah, yeah, no, the, I have a computer I can type stuff on. I've got a laptop and all that. It's just I can't, and I've downloaded like other apps onto my old iPhone. For some reason, I could do it then, I just can't do it now because after it fell into the water, it completely died. So that's why I was just like, I don't understand why my Apple ID isn't being recognized, you know? The previous one that I, the thing, so it's kind of, but it, but we found out that Nate, it was under Nate's old email address that he can't remember the password to. And then, and then, and then my daughter, when she got her phone, put her phone number in. And so it goes, all the messages goes to her phone, which is weird. But anyway, so we're just, it's, it's a little convoluted right now. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Well, if you, if you can get the minutes typed and emailed to me, I can distribute them to the rest of the committee if, if, but.
Yeah, I can get typed and then I can scan them, maybe. I can scan them and then I can send them to Mariah. I don't know how to, I mean, I can scan them and then send them. Oh, I don't know. How would I do that?
You can just email them.
I can, on, off my Gmail, do you think?
Yeah.
Gmail to email it to me, I guess, until we get you set up with your, your town email.
Okay, that sounds good. Or I can mail them to you, Mike, whichever one you want.
That's, that's fine. No, I, I prefer to do everything electronically that we can, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I just, Deb, are you okay with technology? With Jake there, you should be, I hope. You got everything you need.
I have a bachelor, I have a bachelor's righte, so, yeah, I'm just fine.
All right.
So, so Mariah, do we need to make arrangements for me to bring my computer and my phone into you? Or how should we do that?
Um, why don't I give you a call? Probably not tomorrow, just because I've been swamped this week and I have a bunch of stuff to catch up on. But maybe we can schedule something for next week and do you have a laptop or a desktop?
I have both. I can bring a laptop. I have a Mac and an iPhone that I can set it up on.
Okay, because if you want, I can, I know that you just had surgery. I could come and just sit in your driveway with you and we can do it from there, probably.
Done. You call it and I'll be there.
All right.
Thank you, Mariah.
So there are some other old stuff. Wait, we have to go through this first, but I do have some other things I want to talk about too.
Okay, this, this is gonna take a while because I'd like to go through them if we could and I'll, I'll try to read them. If I can.
Okay.
Are we gonna read through the whole thing?
Yeah, I'd like to. I think it's worth taking the time to do. Acting Chair Michael Schaefer joins Moonlight Davis, Deb Smith, Sunhee May join the meeting at approximately 7:35. Town Administrator Brian Smith and Planning Assistant Mariah Kurtz. Also in attendance were Joe Folly, Drew Bardakis, Michael Zimmer, representing Irving Poplar Mountain Solar and Owners, Jack Warren and Jacqueline Boydin, Resident Susan Breton, Rob Boski, Stephen Osberg and Jacob Smith. Board called to order at 7:00 PM approval of minutes and mail review. There was no review of mail or minutes from the previous meeting. So I think the meeting, the last meeting of last year, Deb, still needs to be approved. Because this was our first meeting of the 2020. The hearing was scheduled to start at 7:00 PM, however, it wasn't, it was late. Board agreed to wait until 7:30 to open the meeting, giving time for a member to join. While we wait to open the meeting, the board asked for a status update on the project and agreed to take audience questions. Joe updated us that all site work had begun. The building inspector has okayed this. Susan Breton asked why equipment was on her-
I will be right back. You guys can keep going.
And if there was work being done to widen the road, Joe explained there should be no equipment on her property and that would be investigate this right away and have it moved immediately if there was. I've asked what road Susan was referring to and she called it, it was Popular Mountain. Clarified it was Popular Mountain. Brian explained that no, there was no work done on the solar project on Popular Mountain Road. No. So, okay, so there shouldn't have been any equipment on the road. Sunhee joined the meeting at approximately 7:35. Planning Board called the public hearing to order at 7:40. Michael Schaefer explained that we had to hold another special hearing due to the expiration of the construction permit in order to extend or reissue the permit. The special hearing process needed to be held again. It was only good for one year, correct? I believe, and, and this was almost three years after. At the time, Mike Z, Joe and Drew presented the site plans. There were no significant changes to plans from the original submission, except for the two minor changes. The first being the moving of the interconnection path that change was requested by Eversource. Eversource requested the line be moved to run on the existing poles. The second change was the size of the tree clearing. It was reduced. Mike Schaefer asked the planning board if they had any, felt screening was necessary for the project. The board decided it was not, as an installation was not overly visible from the road. They, Mike Zimmer informed the board that at the property owner's request, they will be installing blueberry bushes at screening. Susan Breton voiced concern about water runoff from the project and it could affect the stream on her property on the garage on the corner of the Northfield-Poplar Road. Drew explained that the NOI included a full storm water report, which shook into consideration the change in groundwater. There are sediment and erosion controls in place. He also explained that there was storm bank basins at the north and south end of the site. Can I read? Thank you. To control runoff. Mike Schaefer brought to the attention that David Brew, the Archaeological Preservation Officer voiced concern that there could be articles of significant on the site, as it being highly traveled by Native Americans. And feels a tribal monitor should be on site during excavation work. Drew pointed out that during the initial permitting the project, the process, I'm sorry, the process, the documents were supplied to the Mass Historical Commission and they had no concern regarding the project. Moonlight asked what the tribal monitors' role. Mike explained that they would be cataloging and taking any artifacts were found on the site. The cost is approximately dollar, $90 per hour and would be on site during construction. Mike Zimmerman explained that they do see this as a burden. The property's been farmed, including tilling for many years without concern. He also explained the newly soil removal was the catch basins. The mounts for the solar panels are put into the ground and asked if, if we had required the tribal monitor for other projects, which we have. Joe explained that all the site work, access road, track and pad clearing, storm basins has been completed. There are no earth eruptions during this project. There were some large trenches they dug that I was there and so weren't the tribal officers. I met with them. So that wasn't quite true, what he had said at that point. The tree stumps are not being removed. And asked if tribal monitors should inspect those areas and dirt removed from them. Asked how the large, the basins were. They were about 20 feet by 30 feet. Mike asked feels those are the areas that should be inspected. Motion by Mike, Mike asked and seconded by Moonlight, the planning board voted unanimously to require tribal monitor, inspect the storm basins and dirt removed from these areas and be on site during any ground excavation. Susan Breton explained that her property is downhill from the site and is concerned about the runoff from the storm basins. Drew explained that the basins are infiltration basins. They are designed to infiltrate the water in the ground. There should not be any overflow from them. At this time, having no other questions from Joe, Mike, Z or Drew, there were no further questions from the audience on the motion. And by Moonlight and seconded by Sunhee, the planning board voted unanimously to close the public hearing. Mike asked made a motion to extend the special permit for Irving Poplar Solar for one year with the condition that a tribal officer be on site during ground excavation and inspect the catch basins. Deb seconded the motion. Is that the end of it? That anymore, right? Okay. Okay, a roll call was taken. And everybody voted yes. So I make a motion to approve these minutes as written. Anybody have any changes they want made?
No. I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Deb. You did a good job with those.
Thanks.
Okay. The next one was.
Working on it.
What was the date up above? It didn't look right.
Yeah, it was February. I can correct that and send out a new copy once they're approved.
It was February?
Yeah, that's a typo, so I will correct that and send out a new copy once they're approved.
What was the date supposed to be, though? Does anybody know?
You're muted, Deb.
Those would have been July's meeting and then the next that Mariah has would be August.
Yeah, I think it was 7/23/20, which is what you have in the, the document name.
Yeah.
So you'll make a note to change that before we, we issue them, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Chair Jacqueline Boydin, George Moonlight Davis, Sunhee May, Mike Schaefer and Deborah Smith. Planning Assistant Mariah Kurtz was also in attendance. Board called to order at 7:34. No minutes, no mail. Elections of new officers passed over until next meeting. Update zoning and subdivision bylaws. The planning board is working on updating and rising, revising our existing zoning bylaws. Some specific areas that need a ten, review are signage, including political signs, electronic submission of documents to planning board, creation of a mill overlay district, shed and fence bylaws, minimum lot sizes, auxiliary dwelling units, marijuana bylaws, frontage and setback requirements and any other needed changes. Special permit length extend to three years. Planning board mission statement was our philosophy. Lot sizes when exemptions is stated. Medium sized lots are overlooked. I guess I don't understand that one. Assuring zoning and bylaws are welcoming to everyone. That's a big one. All right, Mariah suggested looking at alternative types of zoning that might be more appropriate for Irving. She will, you had like three or four you mentioned. She will do some research and present her findings at our next meeting. Jackie would like us to work on revisions and be prepared to present them at public hearing in February or March. That way we will have time to make any changes before presenting. Revised bylaws by a vote at the annual town meeting. Jackie will contact Peggy at the Furcog to assist us with reviewing the bylaws. Mariah recommended we also review the Irving master plan and open space. We should be using. The goals listed in those to assist with revising any bylaws. Shed bylaw and overlay district will be reviewed as part of the bylaw review. Extends special permit to three years. Discuss extending the special permit expiration from one to three years. Often for larger projects, obtaining the special permit is the first step in the process. And by the time the developer has completed all of permitting, the special permit is nearing or has expired. Extend to three year timeframe allows the adequate time to bring projects to completion. The planning board is in favor of changing to a three year frame. Adjoynment in future meetings on a motion made by Jackie and seconded by Sonny. Voted unanimously to adjourn at 8:24. The next meeting will be held on August 20th at 7:00 PM. Be a go to webinar. Respectfully submitted, Deborah Smith. Thank you. I didn't see anything. Wrong that needed correction other than the date at the top. Anybody else?
No.
No.
No. Both, so I will correct those and then I will send out new ones.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll make, I'll make a motion. Do we have to, I think we don't have to approve the. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think you can make the changes that we, we tell you and you can issue them, Deb. Do you know, Mariah?
Yep. We make a motion to approve as amended.
Yeah.
Prove as amended. Moonlight, you're going to second?
You are.
Okay.
All in favor of accepting the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, only one more to go.
And this one also has the wrong date, but it should be 8/27/20.
8/27/20. Okay, great. Thank you.
This should be the one that's going to be sad to read. All right. Chair Jaclyn Boyd, George Moonlight Davis, Sonny May, Mike Schaefer, Deborah Smith. And the board was also joined by Peggy Sloan from Furcog and Mariah Kurtz, planning assistant. The board called to order at 6:58. Passed over the minutes until the next meeting. No mail to review. Reorganization of the planning board. Jackie let the board know that she would be stepping down as of September 1st, given that. And. Given that in the recent town election, the board needs to reorganize, given. I didn't, does that sentence make sense, given that the recent town?
I think it's saying, given that she is stepping down and the recent town elections.
Oh. I, I. I know. The two positions that need to be elected are chair and clerk. Jackie explained what each position does. Yeah, I don't know what that has to do, given that the recent town elections. What can, I don't, I guess I'm not following that sentence.
Typically, the board, every time there, when the, when there a town election has been held, typically boards reorganize. So given that Jackie stepped down and elections and in theory, new members were elected, it was just Moon and I. That that happened, we were reorganizing.
Maybe it could be worded just a little bit differently.
Sure, somebody tell them what they want. I will make the change.
I guess like we, we just needed to, we needed to reorganize, correct? I mean, I don't know if the town elections had anything to do with it. I, I, that's the only thing. But. The two positions that need to be elected are chair and clerk. Jackie explained what each position does. Then he volunteered to be the clerk. The planning board voted in favor. Son, he nominated Mike to be the chair, Moonlight second, and the board voted in favor. Okay. A and R for the town of Irving. Jackie and Mariah explained that town would like to subdivide the old Usher Mill Building. Out of the river front park parcel and give it its own parcel. On a motion by, made by Mike and seconded by my son, he, the planning board voted in favor to approve. The A and R for the town. Just. For Jackie took, take, that's one of the tasks that she does that. I'm not sure who's going to do. She was the one that decided that this didn't need. It was approval not required because the parcel met all the requirements. So she is doing something prior to the meeting to help facilitate the meeting. And I'm not sure who's going to do that. I guess I have to learn to do that in the future or somebody has to learn. That's one of the things that she does that just. Magically happens, you know? All right. Sorry to digress.
I'm sorry, Mike. I'm also looking at the date and the held at town hall up above there. I think that needs to get changed.
Thanks, Sonny. I already updated it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great.
No problem.
Jackie explained there were at least three mill sites, IP mill, Irving Paper Mill and Renovator Supply Company. That this type of overlay zone would apply to have an overlay district could assist in making sure the sites can be. Of mixed use and make them potentially more attractive to developers. It would also give current owners more flexibility on how the sites could be used. Mariah explained how she is currently working on an application for grants for the IP mill and the property is going to be subdivided into four lots. She explained how this type of overlay district could be beneficial for a site like the IP mill. Peggy explained that she feels a planned unit overlay district would be the best fit. This would allow mixed use on the site. Developer would still be required to follow a site plan review and special permit process. Would still apply. Specific site uses can also be added if we feel necessary. Peggy explained that the public hearing process would still be required. So residents do have an opportunity to weigh in on the process. The planning board discussed and would like to pursue the overlay. Peggy will draft a bylaw and have it for us to review at the upcoming meeting. The board reviewed sections one through four and identified areas in which. That in each, I'm sorry, and each that need to be looked at in each section. Each. That need to be, okay, areas to revisit the board. That might be able to clean that sentence up a little bit. I don't know. The board reviewed sections one through four and identify. Areas in each that need to be looked at in each section. Does that make sense to everyone? Areas to be revisited are filing fees confirmed that are enough to cover our actual costs. Associating with filing requirements such as newspaper advertising, registered mailings, et cetera. Marijuana, marijuana, marijuana bylaws. Could Peggy review and offer suggestions on any needed changes. Accessory dwelling units. Currently have no bylaws for them, possibly by special permit only. Review zoning districts, make sure they are all still relevant, non repetitive and function as intended. Look at eliminating the French King District if it's still needed or, or would CB be a better fit? Update master plan per Peggy. There is currently no grants for this. Figures are around 50 to 75,000. We could update sections at a time at less cost. We could offer a survey and hold community meetings to obtain feedback for residents. Areas of focus could be goals, visions and objectives. Section two have Furcog review confusing grammar and hard to follow. Noise bylaw, Irving currently does not have one. Should we consider one? I thought I read something about 50 decibels in our bylaws. Maybe I'm wrong.
I think that's for like an industrial use or something like that. So like, if you're just like making noise, like if you're having a party. There's, I don't think anything you can do, or you're having band practice or shooting off fireworks or whatever.
Shooting guns?
You know, yeah, that. Some of that should be about how early do, are, are we permitting noise to start in the morning? Is it cool to start it at seven o'clock or 6:30? Which I think we need to consider that because there are some, you know, if it's coastal residents. And for example, the shop near me at seven o'clock, this man is grinding on his cars. And that's, how do you sleep your last hour if that's happening? So I think we need to talk about.
By seven o'clock, Moonlight.
What?
All right, wireless bylaw, wireless overlay, is it still needed? Lot dividing lines, some lots have property in two zoning, should we reconsider zoning boundaries to eliminate this? Shed and fence bylaws. On a motion made by Mike and seconded by Sonny, the planning board unanimously adjourned. The next planning board meeting will be scheduled September 17th at 7:00 PM via go to webinar. Respectfully submitted by Deborah Smith. Yeah, I, I think that looked good, Deborah. I just didn't follow that one sentence too well where. The four sections. And looked at in each section. I don't know if there's a better way to write that, but.
Okay.
Any ideas? Can everybody else follow that sentence? Okay, maybe it's just me.
I think it's fine, but.
I think it's fine, but I wrote it, so.
Let it go. It's fine. I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second it.
Okay, Moonlight, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. That's a lot of work. Now, I, I believe they have to go to Dick and Betsy. To be posted on the website.
Yeah, I'll sign them electronically and email onto Dick.
So you know, you can do that. I, Sonny, is that something you, you, you know how to, I don't know how to sign them electronically, but that would be. The best way is that, do you know how to do that, Sonny? Or maybe Deb could show you.
So you can do the, send it to Dick or Betsy electronically, but.
It would be nice to have, Ryan did mention they should be signed. I don't think we've, I, I don't remember if we've always signed them in the past, but they should be.
So the way, the way, the way I've always done the minutes. I and Sonny, I don't know if you've done minutes before, so I don't know if this would be helpful and Mariah or Brian can probably get you a copy. The town follows what's called Robert's Rules. And so that, if you haven't done minutes, is a great resource. It tells you what needs to be included. There are very specific things that must be in the minutes. So what I've always done is I do the minutes, I hand them out. Once we approve them, I will. I used to just print them and then I just signed them and dropped them in Dick's bin. Or I gave them to Jackie. I sign electronically just because I can. It's, I'm, I'm a tech person. It's easy. You can, once they're approved, Sonny, all you have to do even is just print them out, sign them. Pop them in an envelope to town hall. I know there's a little envelope outside and just drop them off with someone. And then Dick or Betsy will put them on the website for us.
Oh, that sounds great. I can do that.
Do you have a printer, Sonny, where you can print them? Okay?
Yeah, I can access the printer.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. All right, do you have anything else or should we?
What I. I'd like to set the next meeting date. It will be the third Thursday in October. Our, going back to our normal schedule.
Okay.
I, I can't meet every two weeks. I don't have time to do it right now.
Okay.
So I guess, can we talk about the scheduling? So I, I think Mike, you had told Brian that you didn't think that we would be able to get this done for the spring town meeting.
He told me that we could work on what we want to and there's no obligation from the planning board. To make any changes to the zoning bylaws.
Right, I guess I'm saying, can we discuss as a group, as, as your group, what goals are? I think the last time we talked, everyone thought we would be trying to get this done for the spring town meeting, but if that's not the case. Then we should change that because in order to do that, I do think that we'll have to meet more than once a month.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not willing to meet more than once a month. So I think we need to first get our mission statement in place and then prioritize what we're going to present. If we want to prioritize and get it for the town meeting, we need to work on those areas and get them done for the town meeting. We don't need to change everything at once.
But it should be a package. So you should make all of your changes and then propose the new zoning bylaws. So even though you don't have to change everything in here, you should probably at least do it section by section. If not the whole zoning bylaw.
I, I guess too, I'm a little confused. I thought we had already agreed to start working on the bylaws as a, as a package as a whole. So I guess I'm confused how.
And to be truthful, I, I, I'm overwhelmed with trying to do it all. So I'm going to step back and write our mission statement. And then prioritize what we think needs to be changed and make sure it aligns with our mission statement.
Right, so I think, I think that we were under the impression that we had to do the whole thing. And so that's why we're trying to do the whole thing all at once. But then Mike got, you know, more information and the, okay, I suppose of, from Brian, did you say? That we can do sections at a time and.
We, we can take recommendations from Mariah and the select board. We don't have to implement any of them. So I, 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 I'm not saying we won't, but I think we as a planning board need to decide. What our mission is. And then make sure we prioritize what we're going to work on and try to get it, what we feel is the highest priority done in time for. February or what. in time for February or whatever date was that Jackie laid out for us in her minutes.
So let me understand now what's going on. So we are changing the idea that we had last meeting to revamp the the zoning bylaws from one to whatever it was, the sections. Is that true, Mike? We're changing how we're going to approach that? We're only gonna approach it once a month?
Correct.
And if we approach it once a month, are we gonna have an extended meeting like we've had now? I mean, to to cover the ground necessary to get it done? Or would you like to figure out some way to give each of us a little bit of a section of something and work it on or wait until we do this purpose?
I, that's a great idea, Moonlight. I mentioned that to Brian. He said we have to be careful that we don't break public hearing laws. How to, how to do it? I'm not, I'm not sure of the best way of doing it, Moonlight. I I'd like to continue. I would like to work on this between meetings. But I'm not sure how to do it without breaking laws.
You can have subcommittee meetings, which aren't a quorum.
So the first thing I'd like to do is get the purpose statement revised. And it's late tonight and I don't, you know, this is a good example. I would like to get this done as soon as we can because to me it's, you know, if we could try to get that done in two weeks, that would be good. But I'm not sure how to do that. Mariah, do you have any ideas?
So I think that you guys just need to figure out what you want to change. If you're gonna change the whole thing, you'll have to rewrite it from scratch. If you just want to add a couple clauses, then I think then people can just write the clause that they'd like to add. And then at the next meeting, you propose, I would like to add this chunk.
Can we do that prior to the next meeting? Get it to you somehow? No?
Well, I mean, you have to agree. I mean, you can send me what you want to add, but we can't discuss it or talk about it as as a group until the meeting.
So we can send you what we'd like to make changes to it. I guess I would ask people to do that if they could put in what they think is important for our for the planning board. I mean, this, I don't, what's here is good. I think we can just add to it.
Can, is it, can we back up a little bit? Because I'm still feeling really confused. I feel like we were working on one path and working towards one thing and without any group discussion. That has been completely changed. I felt, I feel it's very strongly that it's important to be working on these bylaws. I don't think putting off things like the plans unit by law and things like that are, is a good thing. And maybe you're not intending to, Mike, but I feel like you're coming in and telling us what we're gonna do, where normally our board functions very collaboratively. And I'm I'm feeling a little bit like there's no collaboration. We're just being told this is how it's going to be. And and I don't know if that's intentional. Maybe it, to me, that's just how it's coming across. So I'm just a little surprised to hear that all of a sudden we're not, that the bylaws are gonna go to the back burner and we're not, we're not gonna be working on them. I feel like for a month now, that's kind of what we've been gearing up towards.
Well, I've been, I've put in quality systems for over twelve companies with two to five hundred employees. And one of the key things is you have a purpose and mission statement, which everything is supposed to line up with. And that's what I want to do here. I want every, I want us to be in agreement that we're working on the right thing. I don't, we don't have the resources to go try to change everything and and we don't have to, which I thought we did, and that was part of my frustration.
Can I clarify something? So I I don't know, when you're referring to change everything, you don't have to like change all of the rules in here. But part of the zoning is that things are interconnected. So we do have to look at, we can't. If if you change the uses in section four, we just have to make sure that the other sections aren't then like affected by that. Do you know what I mean? Like if you change one section and the other section builds on that.
Yeah.
You have to make sure that you're looking at those together. So you don't have to go through and change everything. Like there's gonna be whole sections in here that you're probably gonna wanna just keep. But you do, I think you're going to have to comprehensively look at this before you pass things at town meeting. Because you could accidentally create a big loophole or conflicting information if you just do one chunk at a time. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Somewhat, but the, everything needs to be passed through legal correct prior to go into the town meeting. And then it gets voted on. And then the attorney general has to approve it after that before it becomes enacted. So the curb bylaw, I I don't know where that is right now. Did that? Has that gone through the attorney?
I don't know if it's been approved by the attorney general yet. I'm not sure.
So there are some checks in here anyhow, but I don't mean to be coming across like this, but I'm not willing to take, like, for instance, get do away with the French King district, just because it's may, we may not need it. That that's not a high priority for me. So. I don't think that's gonna come out as a high priority when we go through our mission statement and see what that does to help the town. I I.
What concerns me is I'm hearing you say that you don't think it's a high priority and it could be for others on the board. And we are a board, so everybody has.
Okay, we can vote on things, but first we need a mission statement and compare what you're asking us to work on to the mission statement. Is it, is it gonna help the town? Is it gonna meet economic diversity and racial diversity and safety? And I I think another key one is getting wireless to all the areas and cell service to all the areas.
But those are, those are services you want to offer. Those aren't bylaws. Like, we can't write a bylaw that there has to be self for service all throughout Irving. I I guess my concern is I'm hearing, for me, it it sounds like if you don't feel it's important that it's something that the committee won't be speaking about. And I just want to make sure that as elected officials, we are all on the same level. And that it's something that as a, as a committee, we should be bringing up, we should be discussing, and the committee as a whole should be choosing. Yes, this is a topic we want to pursue. No, this is a topic we don't want to pursue.
Okay, after we get our mission statement in place, we can compare. That's fine.
Well, this would be within the mission statement, Mike. I don't, I understand what a mission statement is and what it does. But even if something doesn't make it into the mission statement, doesn't mean at some point it can't be discussed and and talked about.
No, I I I'm open to talk, discussion on anything and voting on things. But I need, we need to prioritize our resources.
I I think that that we're bogged down in a particular place where we need to come together and do one thing unitedly as a board. And from that one thing, then we can move on to the next. So if we all agree that we're working on a mission statement, then that'll be the thing that we work on. And we won't do anything else until that's done. I don't see any other way the board can function as a board unless the whole board approve of each step of the way of everything we're doing. That's a, that's my personal feeling. I I, my feeling is that I think Deb is correct in the sense that we almost feel like we're a part of it, and I think that's the dance that we have to do right now.
Right, and and what, and what I hear Mike saying is, what I hear Mike saying is that the mission state statement will be leading, it it would be like the the head of the train and would be leading the rest of the, what we're looking at, all of the bylaws. That's what I'm hearing.
I agree. I just want us all to agree on that's what we're doing.
That's what I was hoping to do.
Yeah, so you, Mike, you're saying, let's do a mission statement so that we know that what what is stated in the mission statement is is the purpose of why we're doing the bylaws. They're going through the bylaws.
Purpose of the bylaws, that's the closest we have to our mission statement. It's a purpose.
Right, right, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
So do you want both a purpose for the bylaws and a mission statement as the planning board?
No, no, I think what I'm saying is the the mission statement is the purpose. Like, in the, in the mission statement, it states the purpose of why we have the bylaws or, you know, the, something about why, yeah, basically, why why the bylaws are there or, you know, to improve the town and and to safeguard the town and all of that stuff in the mission statement.
Right, so we have a section one point one, we have a purpose. So I I think, maybe I think we're making this into a bigger thing than it is, unless you want to totally rewrite it. So if you just want to add or take out a few things and like kind of rework it.
Right, I think that's.
I don't see that taking more than a meeting.
No, I agree with you, and I'd like to get it done. We should have it done for the next meeting. And I'd like to, every give feed, is it okay, Mariah, if everybody emails what changes they suggest to you to help facilitate at next meeting?
Sure, I can do that. Yeah, so if everyone wants to just kind of look that over and think about anything they want to add or take out, or if you think it's fine as is. I guess I would be prepared next meeting to potentially, I mean, I I don't want to say that we're not gonna spend time on it, but it might not take as long as you think. So maybe be prepared to look at section four like we were going to tonight. And look at the maps, I guess, would be my, my suggestions of kind of next steps, but I don't know what everyone else's next steps after that would be.
Maps are very important.
The maps by then too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully, yep.
I think that's a great idea, and I also.
That we, that everybody send Mariah their revisions to the purpose. And we'll, we'll finish, we'll do that at the beginning of next meeting.
What were you saying, Deb?
I was just gonna say, I think it's a good idea. I also think it's very important. Our bylaws, although they are intensive, there are not too, too many of them. I feel it's important that we keep the schedule that was originally laid out. I think meeting once a month, we are going to, this is going to take us a whole nother year. And I I just, I don't think that's a good idea. I think some of these things should be changed. And I think, you know, like sections one, there really isn't much to change except for the purpose. Section two had a little bit of strange wording. We wanted to have Peggy look at for us. You know, so I just personally feel this, I think May town meeting is a very attainable goal. And I'm gonna be honest, I'm a little frustrated. I feel like I had the rug ripped out from me and we were going in a direction and without any agreement of our board, suddenly we're putting the entire project on pause. I I think working on the purpose and a mission statement is important, but I think that can very easily be done in conjunction with reviewing the bylaws.
Well, your, your concern's been noted. I'm not willing to meet more than once a month, so. That's all I have time to do.
A subcommittee that could meet more than that? I guess I'm just questioning it, Mike, because when we had originally talked about meeting twice, twice a month, you seemed like you were okay with that.
I've been working over forty hours a week the last month, so I I really don't have time to do this more than once a month.
So I would say one proposed solution to that is having subcommittees. And people meet with their subcommittees and come back to meet as a group and talk about what they've worked on. I don't know if a plant, if a board can meet without their chair.
You can, you just have to appoint a temporary chair for that meeting.
So I don't know if you'd all be willing to do that, and I don't know if there's other options. I'm I'm not familiar enough to know.
Well, I think it's important that if there are, if the energy for us to meet more than the required once a month time at this point, and if Mike can't do it, that a subcommittee should be organized so that at least we as a board continue to move forward with some of this. I'm, my suggestion is that I hear Mike, I understand what Mike is saying. And I'm saying that I, George Moonlight Davis, has enough energy to meet more than the once a month. If anybody else is willing to do that with me, I'm on it. If not, I'll just wait and do what everybody else do.
Son He, are you able to meet more than once a month?
Ah, that's a good question. I I mean, I I was kind of committed to doing, or, you know, thinking that I could do twice a month. Now that the kids are back in school. I mean, it, it's like every two, that's every two weeks, right? Basically, every Thursday? Or can you guys, can see me outside the Thursday? Does it have to be on a Thursday or can it be another day if it's outside of the, you know, the regular one month?
Well, I can't, can't rearrange it. I mean, it doesn't have to be that.
Right, right. Correct, everything would ever work for whoever's meeting.
Right.
Right, if that's possible, then it's probably better, it would be better for me anyways and more doable.
Okay.
If it could be a different night than a Thursday and then, you know, the once a month Thursday, the planning board meeting Thursday, you know, would be good. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. So does anyone have, can I get back to you on that date, though? On the, on the day of the week that's least busy?
We have to decide that we're gonna do it.
Okay, so I'll do it on a different day than Thursday night.
Okay.
On a different night.
I'll do it with you on whatever night you can do it on. Deb?
Sounds good.
My, my nights are normally pretty open, so whatever, Son He, whatever works best.
Yeah, we'll do it.
I would just say I can't usually do Monday nights because that's when the Board of Select meetings are. And also often Conservation Commission meetings, but I can, I can show up to meetings most other nights.
Okay, so no Monday nights for you. Okay, cool.
And you guys don't have to wait for me, but that's, I'm throwing that in there.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll keep that in mind too, just kind of like, because, you know, it just gets so busy, you know, and I'm like, oh crap. I know that we're still like socially distancing, but it's just trying to keep everything like on clockwork is like.
Having kids in school is definitely hard right now.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little draining, draining. Okay, that sounds good. So I I can get together another time during the month. And then we'll keep that Thursday for the planning board, Thursday, seven P M. And that's good, that's good.
How do you feel about all this, Michael?
I I don't know how it's gonna work for you guys, but thank you for your enthusiasm. Our next meeting will be the third Thursday in October.
Okay.
I think that's like.
Maybe you can find out what you need to do to be legal as a subcommittee. I'm not sure how that works.
So they would just be meeting without their chair, so they would appoint a temporary So they would just be meeting without their chair, so they would appoint a temporary, um, chair for that meeting.
Right, we just post it as a regular meeting and then when we meet, um, at the start of the meeting, we just say that our chair wasn't able to attend and so we appointed. Just like Mike, when you've hosted the, um, public hearings when Jackie had to step down, and we just appoint a temporary chair for that night.
That's all.
Okay, so the next, um, planning board meeting, the regular scheduled on a third Thursday would be October 16th, looks like, on the calendar.
Okay.
Um, but prior to October 16th, I've gotta look at the dates and can I email you guys? Is that a thing I can do or text you guys or let Mariah know and then Mariah?
So you guys can discuss, um, scheduling meetings. That's not a violation of open meeting law. So if you guys wanna email each other or call each other about that to organize, that's fine.
I'm on it. Yeah, we, I'll do whatever you decide, Sonny.
Texting, texting is easiest, if texting is easiest for you, that's good with me.
It would be good. Uh, can I have your numbers again? Because I, like I said, it's a lot of my contacts and I just, I mean, I looked your name, you know, if I look up like Mike, um, Mike's number, all I get is like his email. I don't get my phone number anymore.
If, um, if you guys wanna email me the numbers and I can send them out, just because this is being recorded as a public meeting, I don't know if you want your personal phone numbers on here. So if you, if you want, um, I can email Sonny your phone numbers.
Done.
Okay. Sounds good.
Sounds good.
I'll, I'll tell you my phone number then, Mariah, and then you'll give it to them and then they can text back or something and say, hey, this is Deb or, hey, this is mine. Hey, this is, is that okay? Cause I won't know if a number just pops up without a name, you know? This is such a pain in the butt, right? Oh, I apologize, sorry. You, you don't wanna lose your Apple ID. Make sure you safeguard that like your loins, okay? You lose it, it takes months.
Let me go to the dark side and get Android.
It takes months.
This Apple thing has, they have a monopoly and they just, I mean, they're doing it out of security purposes, but it's driving me crazy. Really, really not, uh, anyway, okay, um, anything else? Mike, is that there?
I'm here now. I make a motion, can someone make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, uh, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
At 9:19 PM. Okay, uh, Deb, did you second?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Cool, I'll say aye, or I don't know, Mike, what do you say?
Yeah, all in favor?
All in favor, that's it. Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everybody, for your help and.
Oh my gosh, thank you, Mike. This is a lot, Mike. It's tremendous.
It's kind of overwhelming for me, so, thank you.
It's, no, thank you. We just need to get the momentum going, you know what I mean? I think it's just kinda, yeah.
Thank you all so much for working on this. It's definitely needed and I, I feel good about moving forward with it.
Okay. So I'll talk to you. Mariah.
Yep, I will reach out to you and schedule a time to come sit in your driveway and figure out how to download an app onto your phone.
Okay, and Mike, I'll be talking to you too. I guess we'll, we'll, we'll talk, you know, tomorrow sometime.
One thing that I forgot to say, um, Deb and Sonny, if you can come to town hall and sign the plans that are in the foyer, I, I think you guys signed the front page, but just missed the plans on the A and R.
Oh.
Did you get my?
I think, Moonlight, I think you have them. I can confirm when I call you, but I'm pretty sure that yours are there. And I think Mike's are there. It's just, um, I think Deb and Sonny, I think you guys signed the front, but just not the plans.
Okay.
Okay, I'll stop in there, Mariah.
Thank you.
I'll be over tomorrow, uh, tomorrow at some point. Is that good?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, awesome, cool.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, all right.